What I kept hearing was that St. Vincent's Hospital is a private hospital, and it can kind of do what it wants to do, and it doesn't need to necessarily involve us, the public. But we did a little research, and we discovered that St. Vincent's is a 501(c)(3), which is a public charity. It files a 990 tax return, and in fact, it has an obligation to file annual tax financial information with the Attorney General's office. Then we started to look at the Department of Health's regulations, and we realized that for a hospital to close, it needed to give 90 days' notice to the Department of Health. It needed to submit a closure plan, a written closure plan that it got approval from. It needed to make sure that patients, and doctors, and nurses, and the community was cared for before it began that process. Governor Patterson secured $6 million for St. Vincent's Medical Center, $5 million of which was from GE investors, and begins discussions to find someone to take over the hospital. In specific, Mount Sinai shows an interest and begins negotiations. That's on March 2nd. On March 24th, Mount Sinai transition talks begin with St. Vincent's. So clearly, they're moving ahead, and now they're discussing transition. On March 25th, there's a hiring freeze that is imposed on St. Vincent's nurses. And on March 30th, the CEO of St. Vincent's, Kevin Davis, and Commissioner Daines have a discussion about Mount Sinai acquiring St. Vincent's, and request for New York State Department of Health to support this happening. The following day, negotiations with Mount Sinai collapse. That was on March 31st, less than a month ago. Less than a month ago, we thought, we hoped, we believed that we would be able to get some sort of deal done with Mount Sinai. A week later, on April 6th, behind closed doors, the Board of Trustees vote privately to shut down St. Vincent's Hospital. Now remember what I said. St. Vincent's Hospital is a what? A 501(c)(3). It's a public charity. Two days later, there's a request for proposal, an RFP. RFPs usually take a lot of time to prepare and draft. Folks who've done that on the panel can talk a little bit about that. Two days later, the RFP is issued, just two days after the vote for urgent care centers. An urgent care center that will replace and privatize St. Vincent's Hospital. How could they have completed these RFPs in two days? The next day, St. Vincent sends written notice to the Department of Health that they intend to close. This is supposed to be a 90-day notice, yet they simultaneously begin closing down the hospital on that day. A day after, they submitted the RFPs, by the way. April 14th, just five days later, St. Vincent's files for Chapter 11 bankruptcy in U.S. Bankruptcy Court, and submits a proposed interim order asking to be allowed to continue closing the hospital until the bankruptcy hearing, which is scheduled for May 6th, happens. Even though they know that the closures will be completed by April 30th. The order also directs that all issues be under the jurisdiction of the bankruptcy court. So when we went into state court to ask for equitable relief, we were only going to court to say, "Please, Department of Health, do what you're supposed to do. Supervise these. You are empowered with great powers. Enforce the law." The Department of Health has police powers. They can stop a closure if they want. They certainly can order an investigation of the Attorney General's office. And another thing is that we went around looking long and hard to try to find the financial disclosures, which we had difficulties finding. There were some of them, but there weren't all of them, and there weren't enough of them. On April 19th, St. Vincent's admits that the entire hospital will be shut down on April 30th, 2010, a week before May 6th, 2010's bankruptcy hearing. This will shield St. Vincent's from any consequences for failing to hold public hearings, failing to get approval of a written closure plan, or in any way having to answer to you, the public, or ensure public safety in the closure. It will also ensure that they are not stopped from illegally closing the hospital, which is what happened today. So what we tried to do was to get in front of a state court judge to ask that this happen. There were two prongs in our lawsuit. One was to stop the closure, and the second was to make sure, no matter what, that there was a hospital that could meet the needs of this community on a basic health issue, on an emergency care issue, on a, God forbid, a level of public health and safety.
Myth number one: St. Vincent's is a private hospital and can close at any time. Lie. Let's go to the truth. The truth is, it's a not-for-profit organization under state law. It is subject to the public health law, which lays out a policy for modification of certificates for hospitals. And it's also subject to the administrative regulations of the Department of Health, which he had to point it out, which require a 90-day notice and require the Commissioner of the Department to sign off on the closure prior to it happening. Run professionally by experts in the medical field. Lie. Let's go to the truth. It was run, in effect, by many of the outside creditors of the hospital. On that chart, these two charts, by the way, the reason they're small is they weren't prepared for presentation to the judge and court, the bankruptcy board. You're more than welcome to go up and take a look and see the numbers on these charts. The top 10 executives of that hospital paid themselves over $10 million in annual compensation every year. The hospital spent $206,000 for golf outings last year. The hospital paid over $30 million to outside consultants to do who-knows-what as they were running it into the ground. The Board of Directors refused, all through last year, when they were in the process of already putting together this closure plan, to put in place a restructuring committee, which the creditors were asking for. Why did they wait till January to do that? That's a big question. And Christine Quinn, the Speaker of the City Council, at the rally that was held last week, said something which is shocking to me. She said she had been meeting with St. Vincent's throughout the year to talk about issues pertaining to the hospital, and the hospital never disclosed the financial distress to the city council person from this district at any time. I found that to be appalling. The St. Vincent's Board of Directors acted responsibly. It's a lie, right? They didn't comply with the open meetings law, which they were subject to after they took the $6 million that the governor and our state officials were able to allocate to keep the hospital in operation. They took their actions in secret, and they refused to bring in the restructuring team in 2009, when arguably, this could have been avoided. St. Vincent's complied with the law and the policy of the hospital. Yeta has already addressed this issue. They're not-for-profit. On that note, the Attorney General's Office, you should all know, they're required to file annual disclosure statements so the public can look at their finances, because they're a not-for-profit. They filed them for a number of other St. Vincent's-related entities. But guess what, folks? Do you think they filed them for the last five years for the hospital? Yes or none? They didn't file them, for five years. We can find them. And you know something? It's a public website, so I don't know. But they weren't there, okay? They abused the administrative regulations. And what they're trying to do now, which we're not going to let them get away with, is once they filed that bankruptcy proceeding, they argued that the bankruptcy court judge, rather than a state court judge, should interpret the state's law as a concur to the closings of hospitals. We argued vehemently to the bankruptcy court judge, "That's not your place. Your place is to allow a state court judge to run state law." Because all the bankruptcy court cares about is paying the creditors. And when Yeta made a very compelling argument to the judge about, "This is not about the creditors." She said, "The creditors are going to get paid." And Yeta said, "What about the patients in the community?" And the judge said, "That's not my concern." And when they went into bankruptcy court, they knew what they were doing. They were hiding behind the bankruptcy court's day and the shield. "It's wrong, and we're going to be filed with general objection, and we're going to continue to fight there." St. Vincent's was almost $1 billion in debt. Truth or lie? Lie. Well, it's somewhat true and it's a lie. Well, in 2001, they changed their not-for-profit status, and what they did is they combined St. Vincent's Hospital with Sisters of Charity and some other organizations into a new entity in 2001, with St. Vincent's Medical Center absorbing the debts of the other unaffiliated organizations when they changed their status back in 2001. So where that debt came from, and the argument that this hospital can't afford to operate in this community, is a lie. Urgent care facility is as good as a hospital. My kind of feeling about this talk about urgent care centers is that it's kind of like, you know, you go walk into the way and read and get a flu shot. Is that what they're suggesting? I should replace this hospital? Department of Health fulfilled its mandate to oversee the operation of St. Vincent's Hospital. All the actions have been closed with secrecy, but we went to state court, and Judge Diamond, who did an excellent job in listening to the oral arguments, asked the Department of Health's attorney and the Attorney General's office, "When did you submit your closure plan, St. Vincent's, to the Commissioner under the 90-day statute, and when did Commissioner Daines approve your closure plan?" The lawyer didn't know what to say. She didn't know the date. She goes, "Well, it's an ongoing negotiation." That's not the law, folks. They violated the law. And nothing about the closure process has been released to the public. But we asked for the documents, and you know what they told us? Print in a foil request, which would take months to receive these documents. Ensure that St. Vincent's complied with the law. Truth or lie? And I'm not blaming the Attorney General. But what I am saying is, there should be an investigation into why they were allowed to operate if they did not comply with the law. This can't happen again. It's the future of healthcare. If people like you in this room do not come together, I sent Senator Tom DeRogan to walk in. If he wants to join us up here. It's the future of healthcare, folks. And this battle, this battle is very important. I think Senator Robert O'Donnell had a bill that he's going to talk about that he had recently put into the Assembly and passed, so I'll defer to you on that. But thank you all for coming out and not allowing this criminal act. I think it's a criminal act. I think they're the enron of the not-for-profit business. Let me tell you something. That's what I think. Thank you.
Believe it or not, I'm late because I was moving to the village so I could walk to St. Vincent's for the next 20 years. I've been there 30 years. That didn't quite work out, as you all know, so I apologize for being late. The other thing I noticed, I was driving back and forth all day from uptown to downtown. At least five ambulances caught traffic with their sirens blaring, their lights flashing, and moving about five feet a minute, if they were lucky. And I thought about the people who would be in those ambulances now that this hospital is closed. Emergency room is where people go when they don't know what's wrong, and they're having chest pain, or their arm is asleep because they're having a stroke, or they're bleeding to death from falling, or they broke a hip when they fell, or they're hit by a cab, or hit by a car, or fell off their bike and cracked their skull open, or they think they're having a stomach ache, but it's actually a heart attack. Absolutely, people also go to the emergency room with runny noses and sore throats and sore arms. But that's the fault of our healthcare system. Too many people use the emergency department for things they don't need to. What the state has done is turn that on its head and say, "Oh, well, we'll just open up an urgent care center." So that the people that use the emergency department for non-emergency uses will have an urgent care center, and all the people who really need an emergency room get screwed. Just try to picture, you're having chest pain, and you're right here, on 9th Avenue, and you have to travel somewhere between 2 and 3 and 1/2 miles in traffic. You're in gridlock. You have to cross town. I think you all know crossing town is about five times harder than going north or south. And meanwhile, your heart attack is occurring, the oxygen's cut off to your heart, your muscle's dying, or you're having a stroke, and your stroke, your brain is dying. The neurologists who are on our stroke team at St. Vincent's, which was one of the best in the country, had a big sign in the emergency room which said, "Time is brain." And Dr. Tugendak over here can tell us, "It's probably a matter of about four minutes before you finish." Four minutes in an ambulance is about two blocks, maybe? Two blocks, okay? You're having a stomach ache, so you think, "Oh, I have a stomach ache. No big deal," and you go to your urgent care center. The physicians that are in the room, and I see several, will all know that one of the signs of a heart attack in a certain portion of the wall of the heart is a stomach ache. So you sit in the urgent care center for two hours, two and 1/2 hours. You get a person who is not an emergency department-trained physician to evaluate you. And by now, you've probably knocked off a portion of your heart muscle. And they say, "Wow, this man is having a heart attack. Let's send him to a hospital with an emergency department." And another hour passes, or another 30 minutes passes. And now you've passed the time. It's critically necessary to get into a cath lab and save that heart. It's a scam, and it's a fraud being perpetrated on the people who live down here. And I'm one of those people. I live down here too. And I guarantee you, absolutely, that people will die. And one of the things I asked when one of the radio interviews, of course, they didn't play this piece in the interview, is that I challenge, I challenge the politicians of New York. Quinn, everybody, the governor, the famous Commissioner Daines, I challenge them to publicly log the ambulance runs from the Lower West Side and the outcome of those runs. This started about, it feels like two years ago, but I think it's two weeks ago, when they stopped the ambulance runs to the hospital. In the space of three days, there were rumors flying around the hospital that two people arrested in ambulances, I think it was a Friday and a Monday. And I know a fair number of people, having been down here a long time, including ambulance drivers and paramedics. And I asked around, and they asked around, and they ran into a stone wall. The two patients were brought to Roosevelt, I believe. They could not get any information from FIDN, Fire Department of New York, who runs our 911 system, or from anyone in the ER, what actually happened to these two patients. There was information that there were patients with heart attacks in the ambulances, but it stopped dead right there. So I really mean that. We need to demand, you need to demand what's happening. Because I guarantee you, as people die, it will just be a small statistic. It's not going to show up in the paper. It's not going to show up in any bulletin board. You're not going to hear about it. And so, you know, Patterson and Daines will be able to stand up there and say, "Hey, this is working. Look at all the sore throats that got treated effectively." You need an ED, an emergency department. Urgent care is garbage, okay? You can get urgent care in my office, in Dr. Tugendak's office, in Dr. Johnston's office, in Dr. Carl's office, all right? We all do urgent care all day long. Granted, we don't stay open all night long. That's true. But it's not rocket science to do urgent care. And in order to have an emergency department, you have to have a hospital. You can't have one without the other. That's the other part of this scam and fraud. To say "urgent care" and "emergency" in the same sentence and act like somehow that's okay and a good substitute for a hospital is a sad, sad joke. I'm sorry we didn't start this two months ago, or three months ago, or six months ago. You know, there's a bunch of docs in the room, and there are 1,000 doctors at St. Vincent's. We've been talking for weeks and weeks and weeks, and fighting and arguing, actually, for years with the administration. I'm going to have to tell you, at this point, the docs can't do anything. We have our offices. We're not going anywhere. We're going to stay in this community and work. But we need to use... The sad problem is we need to use different hospitals, and it's as big a shock for me as it is already for my patients. I won't go into stories, but I've already started having them. The only way this is going to change is things like this. You have to be here. You have to be in the streets. Otherwise, they're just going to let you get tired, and it's going to disappear, and then they'll have their urgent care center. It can't stop.
My hospital closed today, but more important, your hospital closed today. And that really concerns me. I don't live in this area. I've been one of those that have been treated on you for 24 years. 24 are the happiest years of my life. I look around this room, and I see some of the patients that I've had in the 24 years. And urgent care is not emergency care. Urgent care, if you Google it, have a really good look at it. The state that has the most urgent care places is South Carolina. Many, many places. The next is Florida, and the next is Louisiana. And I challenge anybody to take any town or city in any of those states and compare it to this wonderful island of Manhattan. It doesn't work. You are in danger down here. You have no hospital on the Lower West Side. And there's eight just across on the East Side. I say "just across." It's going to take you a long time to get over there if you have an emergency. I thought I was working for the Sisters of Charity in a nice Catholic hospital. I'm embarrassed by what I saw up here. I've never seen those numbers before. You need a revolution downtown. You people have died.
The nurses who have worked there, their pensions may be extinguished as part of the bankruptcy. The members of 1199, the people who changed the bedpan. And it's enron. I agree with you. They may lose their pensions as part of this bankruptcy. It is absolutely outrageous. The New York City Pension Fund invested money in St. Vincent's Hospital. That money might be lost. So it's, you know, it's an amazing thing to look at these bankruptcy filings and to see how many working people are going to lose their life savings because people, I believe, have interacted criminally in the way they operated this hospital, played golf for $206,000 a year.
I've been a patient over at St. Vincent's since the 1970s. St. Vincent's has saved my life a total of three times to date. I am only standing before you now because of St. Vincent's and their emergency room. Twice I went there from my Chelsea apartment with an anaphylactic shock, where I could not breathe. There's no way I could have gotten up to St. Luke's, or to Bellevue, or anywhere else. I am also currently a St. Vincent's cancer patient. And St. Vincent's was there for me when I could not get service at any other hospital. St. Vincent's has now treated my cancer, and I am cancer-free. Now, I'm also a volunteer EMT, and have been all my adult life. And I want to speak to the compassion of St. Vincent's and to their mission to serve the poor, the disadvantaged, to people who cannot get care elsewhere. Now, I am a transgender person, and one of the few things you probably don't know about St. Vincent's is that they were the only hospital who consistently, always delivered compassionate, kind, welcoming, warm care to my community. St. Vincent's served my little transgender community with a kind of kindness that we could not find elsewhere. They are the main place that we go for care. We are each a little community unto ourselves, and many of us are denied care regularly everywhere else we go, especially the poor, the disadvantaged, people who don't speak English too well. And St. Vincent's has long had the mission to serve people who could not get care elsewhere. I don't think it's any accident that the only community hospital who has served the underprivileged, people like me, who are shunned at other facilities, is closing. To me, it's a great example of good guys finish last. And we cannot allow this to happen because we're New Yorkers, because we care about each other, because we care about the people who will otherwise die without a not-for-profit, socially just institution to help us stay alive. As an EMT, I get to meet people when you are bleeding, when you are terrified from that chest pain that the doctors so aptly described, when you're having that stroke, when your mother is having that stroke, and you may be losing her. Okay? As an EMT, I get to hear the families cry. The families cry, and they never get over the loss when people die unnecessarily. We, on the Lower West Side, we need that hospital. We need that emergency room for all the reasons that we've just spoken. It is a crying shame that that hospital has been allowed to go under. And I do want to point out to the politicians that we now have 18 full-service hospitals on the East Side. We are now down to four on the West Side. Okay? And that's not just a slap in the face to the West Side. That is a stab to our heart, and that will be a fatal stab to our heart. Just think, when the holidays come and all those people are coming into shock, do you know how long it takes for me, in driving an ambulance, to get across town to Bellevue to take you with that chest pain, with that arm falling asleep? If you're bleeding out, if your child has asthma and cannot breathe, we're not going to make it there for you, folks. We're not going to make it. All the lights and sirens in the world are going to fix this. St. Vincent's was there during 9/11. Now, do you think that that's the last terrorist attack we are going to have in Lower Manhattan? Who here believes that that's the last terrorist attack that's going to happen in Lower Manhattan? We've already had two. 3,000 lives lost. Now, as an EMT, I'm not an expert on anti-terrorism efforts, but one thing, we are trained, if you have a chemical attack or a bioterror attack, it is critically important to have geographic containment of that terrorist threat. Those weapons must be contained. You can't have people carrying chemical and biological weapons all over the city of Manhattan. You'll lose all of Manhattan. We cannot afford this. We need a hospital. We cannot have a medically underserved, huge swath of Manhattan in the event of another terrorist attack. And I want to tell you straight out, Lower Manhattan is too big to fail. We cannot allow our entire community to go without care. We cannot allow another 9/11. Look at what 9/11 did to our country. It destroyed huge areas of economic prosperity for our country for years, not just Manhattan. So St. Vincent's has played a role, all the way from the little lives of a transgender person who needs cancer care and can't get in anywhere else, to the good of our country. And St. Vincent's deserves our support.
Though we're all upset and angry, St. Vincent's was my hospital too. And I have to say that, I don't want to speak for other elected officials, but I know that I was surprised that there weren't red flags from the hospital earlier. And in fact, really, the first red flag came from the Health Department, not from the hospital. There were some budget cuts. It was called a deficit reduction plan in November, early December. And I have this letter on my desk from the head of the hospital saying, "Thank you very much because we avoided mid-year cuts to the hospital in that deficit reduction plan, and I look forward to working with you on next year's budget." And I think that when the first proposal came out, that there'd be urgent care and a reduced sort of ambulatory care thing that was floated by Beth Israel and Continuum, everybody spoke with a united voice and said, "No, no, no, no. That's not enough." The governor put a task force together. There were, it seemed like, daily briefings and questions. I have to say, most of the elected officials were participating in that. The mayor's office was not, until at some point, somebody said, "Where's the mayor's office?" And then somebody was on the call a few times. I don't know who it was. And I don't think they ever said anything except that they were on the call. I think we all thought we went up to the gate and thought we had a partner in Mount Sinai. And I don't know what happened, but clearly, you know, the last two years, we've all been talking to them about a new hospital, and drawings, and plans. And I think we're all still in shock. While I'm generally an optimist, you know, this whole situation is so convoluted and inexplicable on so many levels that I don't know what to think. Sometimes it requires, you know, the pitchforks around the castle. I'm not sure who's to blame, or if there's... I'm not sure who's to blame or if there's lots of blame or bits and pieces of it. I hope that we can tease it out. The hospital is closed. I don't know if a community hospital can be raised up. Hope that we all can see a new way, even though I don't know what that is. I hope we can see a new way together so that we all wind up having the hospital that we need, need, not just for the people who live here, but for the tens of thousands who work every day in this area and the hundreds of thousands that invade, I mean, who visit on a regular basis.
It's May 11th at 2:00 PM, I'm gonna be in Supreme Court to fight, to make sure that the state, the city, even the federal government understands that it's a necessity to have a hospital in every community. There's no way, no how, that we shouldn't be having a hospital on the West Side. That's the first thing. Secondly, I'm gonna challenge, and I have a great relationship with our local elected officials here. There's no way that you guys, Tom, Dick, Chris, Scott, should sit down and let it happen either. Because I have numerous seniors who are confused, some who came here 60, 70 years ago from Puerto Rico, and all they know is Chelsea, the village where the hospital was, and Puerto Rico. They don't know anything else. I had a senior tell me the other day, as I was walking to the supermarket, "Miguel, can I speak to you?" I said, "Sure." She said, "I wanna know the truth. Is the hospital really gonna close?" I said, "You know, the saddest part about it, I think so. But how? How can this happen? Not in this days, not in the days when our President Obama, who made us an attendance hardly supported, has put together a healthcare reform bill to give us health insurance for every single citizen in the United States. But for what? To take to an institution that's no longer there? Had a resident who lives here, who made it to St. Vincent's Hospital, the doctors told her, "Three minutes more and you're not here tomorrow." These are true stories. I have a patient sitting in the front who has to have car surgery. They told her she has to wait an extra week because they don't have room for her. These are stories that the commissioner, our local elected officials, the governor needs to understand. They did an investigation on the RFP process at the racetrack, they need to do a real investigation here. We were never told anything. It was backdoor, backdoor, backdoor meetings, over and over and over. And the public is fed up. This is our community. We're not gonna sit down, we're gonna continue to organize, we're gonna continue to harass Governor Patterson, Commissioner Daines. We're gonna call them every single day until this hospital stays open. God bless everyone and thank you.
Whatever questions I'm answering, let's all remember that nothing here matters if it isn't about the patients and the people of this community. And, you know, things like financial viability of this, that, or the other thing only matter if they are about delivering healthcare to people in this community. That's what this is all about. Urgent care is gonna be important, but never let anybody try to stand up and tell you that that is any kind of alternative or replacement for a hospital. Any more than, you know, if your ship sinks, a lifeboat is really important, or even floating wreckage at that point. But floating wreckage, while you will cling to it, is not an alternative to your ship. If this were happening in any other city in the state of New York, probably in any other city in the country, the mayor of that city would be front and center screaming While it is true, at almost every meeting, there was an observer from the city administration sitting in the back row.
Not good enough.
We never heard from Mayor Bloomberg. And, you know, he finds it in his heart to get exercised about a whole lot of things. You know, he's exercised about financial reform being debated in Congress and how he thinks that's not gonna be good for New York City. You know, the loss of this hospital, the loss of the only hospital between what used to be called Beepman Downtown and Roosevelt on 60th Street, the loss of the only hospital in that stretch of the world that is home to several hundred thousand people and the workplace of several million people, you know, that can't be good for New York City. You know, I think the mayor should have been in a couple of press conferences, at least.
Am I enraged about what's happened?
Yes.
Yes. I am enraged. And am I unbearably sad and upset about what happened today? Yes. And I know, I know that absolutely everyone in this room feels the same way that I am feeling, all at the same time enraged and sad and upset. And so, because it's not a rally, right? I mean, we could, you know, but this isn't a rally, so, and so let me, I'm bringing my personal to my enrage, like my heart is already, like it's beating really fast. So, this morning, I went to the funeral of a guy named Harry Weider, who some of you may know, who's a disabled physical disease, a period of care, LGBT disabilities, transportation safety, and access to healthcare activist. And he is funerals today. And everyone is talking about a stroke and I'm far, many of you know my mom died as a result of a stroke this year. And when I see you, I think of all of the nurses at St. Vincent's Hospital that wouldn't put on gowns and masks, that wouldn't walk into rooms, that would treat people living with HIV when they were dying and throwing up. And I'm hearing from a doctor, he's an HIV doctor, he's not doing HIV, he's doing substance abuse. And I don't know where he's gonna end up. So, look, what do we want? We want what we had. We want an emergency room and we want a full-service hospital. That's what we want.
Community hospital.
We want, uh-huh, St. Vincent's, listen, maybe bad business decisions, you know, this is, but they treated you regardless of your ability to pay and I'm not gonna settle and none of us should settle and Harry Weider wouldn't settle and none of you should settle for any healthcare facility that doesn't take everyone regardless of ability to pay. When all of us elected were trying to, "Come on, please, come and buy, please, come and take over St. Vincent's," there were those that said, "We'll take your private pay." But you know, we don't know about Medicaid, they can go to Bellevue, they can go to hell! I want what we had, we want what we had, but for everyone, not just private pay, for everyone. If you are on Medicaid, if you use Medicare, if you're Family Health Plus, or Child Health Plus, if you're in managed care or you have no insurance at all, we want treatment for you and we can't settle for less. What kind of assistance we have that has, that allowed a healthcare facility to go $800 billion into debt to GE Capital? Why, why is the public sector not running our healthcare system? Right? So, I don't know why my mom thought I didn't take it over, but you know what? $800 billion in debt to a private entity, does that make me mad? It does make me mad. $800 billion to some private corporation when people might die because we can't get to an emergency room? That is wrong. But, is that regardless of ability to pay, everybody gets the healthcare from emergency room to full-service hospital to every clinic regardless of ability to pay? And I'm not gonna give up until we get that back.
So, I just want to say, I'm sorry Chris couldn't be here tonight. We're here to listen to you, that's why we're here.
Bullshit, she should be here with her family. She should be with her community.
You know, what we want is emergency care, just like the rest of you, I share Tom Dwayne's theory.
We want a hospital, we want a hospital, not a emergency care.
Emergency care and a hospital go hand in hand, I understand that.
She's been saying it's emergency care.
The years that I've lived in New York, I've lived within a walking distance of Washington Square and St. Vincent's Hospital. It's been my hospital and it's been my square. And in 1963, I made the square world famous by writing "Washington Square with the Village Stompers." I'm sitting here, I'm sitting here with a gentleman, I'm sitting here with a gentleman who on the night of 2001, June 10th, my birthday, instead of electing to be out of town to celebrate my birthday, stayed in his apartment on 10th Street in New York City. Because of that, when he realized he was having a heart attack, he was able to call 911 and go out into the hall and wait for the paramedics. They got him there in time. My partner, Albert Marcus, with the black hat, is here because St. Vincent's was here and because they could get him to the hospital before he lost privacy. We have to do something. People are talking about a lot of things. Let me tell you what this really is, people. Unfortunately, the teabaggers are right. This is the first instance of death panel because of inadvertency, because of secrecy. This is a death panel working and people are gonna die because of this over the years.
What I don't understand is how the politicians and Dick Godfrey, Tom Dwayne, I don't understand, I understand your call between, whatever your call between, but I don't understand how we can fund the car dealerships around America and the banks around America and we can't fund the hospital system.
First of all, I want to thank the nurses and the EMT for saving my life. I was in Family Health Plus for a short time. I had a heart attack. My heart stopped. EMT started it and I woke up with a stent. My mother, who had Alzheimer's, was brought in for a week into the Alzheimer's division, the area of St. Vincent's. What other hospital has an Alzheimer's unit? For four years, I have been speaking at the community board, pleading for them to open their books. They want to build a big fancy building, we wanted to make sure they were out of bankruptcy. They wouldn't open their books. I've been told there was a second set of books. Now we find out exactly what's been going on. For four years, where were the politicians? Where was the community board?
I've been only for 40 years on the West Side. I've had this director meet at St. Vincent's, I've had a face makeup put in at St. Vincent's. I've run five nights in a row in my wheelchair from 25th and 9th to St. Vincent's because a prescription was given and they filled it wrong. And I was, oh, you just don't know the feeling when you can't breathe, you're burning up and you can't do anything and you can't wait, you have to go. St. Vincent's takes you right in the door and they took care of me for five nights in a row. They didn't go pray, what's wrong with this woman? Is she crazy or something? No. They checked and checked until they found out that my prescription was filled wrong. By the grace of God, I would have been dead two more days of taking the medication that I was given. And I thank God for St. Vincent's and I hope we get out there and fight for the nurses. First they cut the fire departments out, then they mess with the police, and now they're taking on nurses? God, help us, we're in trouble. Please help us.
St. Vincent's Catholic Medical Center has been raping communities all over the city. In order to put resources into St. Vincent's Manhattan, they closed a hospital in a part of Staten Island where poor people live, they closed a hospital in central Brooklyn, they sold off two hospitals in southeast Queens to, and the institution that came in to run them couldn't run themselves. So, so those hospitals closed as well. These were more, I want a hospital here because I live here, but the communities that got raped were more medically underserved than this community. We've got a lot more resources. I just wish that voices were heard two years ago, three years ago, when this started happening. They pulled resources out to put into St. Vincent's Manhattan and then couldn't even do it with those resources. I want, you know, who comes out of bankruptcy owing $700 million? Nobody, except this incompetent administration and Board of Trustees.
I have served 39 years in St. Vincent's. Five years ago, when it was a large cut, I was one of them and they had to hire two part-timers and they couldn't even do what I did. And all the money from the golf parties and everything else should be refunded and the corporations should join, should join our famous stockbroker in the same prison as a roommate.
We have about 300 seniors that really counted on St. Vincent's. And the good news about that is, as one gets older, as I well know, you enjoy the ritual of knowing where you're going, the camaraderie of your physician. And for many of them, since they really can't get out on their own, we have intergenerational programs of youngsters that help take them to the clinic or over to the hospital itself. And now with the MTA cuts, those youngsters won't be able to have the, have the card to get and help the seniors. So, I thought that maybe Commissioner Daines should have recused himself, first off, because he was involved with Continuum. And as we all know, he's worried about yields, just like he was running airlines instead of hospitals, that the bottom line was, it will look very good when Governor Patterson leaves and he doesn't have a job, that he can go back to Continuum. And without St. Vincent's, he'll be filling his beds in Roosevelt and filling his beds at Beth Israel. So, he should have recused himself. And secondly, I heard reports, I heard reports that in fact, the Mount Sinai deal was so close, but because Commissioner Daines allowed the New York Medical College to decertify the residents program. He allowed that to go and when Mount Sinai heard that they wouldn't have the residents there at St. Vincent's, they said, "We can't run a hospital without residents" and that's why they backed out. Now, this is the way Daines works and Al Smith's board. It shouldn't even be state, it should be federal, and I think they should be brought up on the RICO charges, especially if this woman who worked there, if this woman who worked there can't even file a workers' comp, that's corruption.
My ancestors saw St. Vincent's being built, the little red and white house that I got my first shots when I was a little kid. And my mother was the first in her family to be born in a hospital in 1920 in that hospital, St. Vincent's. My mother and father passed away in that hospital and most of my family. They must be running through the hallway saying, "What is going on?" It's a terrible thing that happened. They have saved my life many times, mentally and physically. They treated me like family. If I needed my hair cut, if I needed to be washed, whatever it was, there was somebody there. It was my second home. It's terrible to say the hospital is your second home, but it was, it was my second home. They treated me like a human being I don't see and they took care of me. Anytime I was in there, they made sure that over my bed said, "Cline." And they watched over my family with kid gloves. When my pop passed away five years ago, I had to get him out of the VA hospital before they destroyed him. And I called the social worker at St. Vincent's and they got him over there. And then I saw my dad in clean pajamas and his hair cut and he looked... And then I saw my dad in clean pajamas and his hair cut and he looked wonderful. And I can only say, "I'm gonna miss the staff because they were wonderful. They're like my family."
I could tell you the stories of how St. Vincent's has saved my life twice. Once without any time to spare. And I had no idea how much I would ever need that hospital. But a friend of mine said to me yesterday that my cats could actually get quicker emergency care and to a hospital quicker than I can now, which is unbelievable, but it's true.
I survived at St. Vincent's in 1972. My mom had a stroke in New Jersey and two doctors, Dr. Robert J. Walsh and Peter Cyrus Rizzo, brought her over from Rattleton Valley Hospital and before you know it, she was walking and talking. Another incident was that my son had a car accident. And he was brought to St. Vincent's. They saved his life. I had five children there. I really am really sad today that they are leaving.
I've had to use St. Vincent's and I know how important it must be. At our hearts, where is the providing of the common good? When everything is hidden, that we can't find the books. And why don't we look to our federal government and our president to see this and say, "We're not just a city, we're New York City." And this is effects, it's just another manifestation that's gonna happen every place else also. It's another way of playing a game with money. Because money isn't lost, it's redistributed.
I think there's some kind of thing that we can do, at least Yada can, and she's tried before, is to get out to the bars and clubs and make them aware that their patrons are under severe penalty for not having this hospital here. There are so many bars and restaurants that go right down to Wall Street that they don't have that facility. And I can't tell you, because I've seen it, I've been here a long time and I've been a party person, that have been at that hospital. So, I think we should go to the businesses, have them put a placard on there that they support it and have them do something in a very, won't be the word.
Effective.
Effective way.
Yada, myself and some of the others, we've been out going store to store encouraging owners to put the signs up about the meeting here tonight. And I think we're gonna include that, that idea as we continue to go forward and go store to store to mom and pop shops.
As we heard from a lady here, that it's like a mini Katrina in the medical world that is happening here. But what's also very interesting is that I just found out today that, you know, the Federal Reserve is not owned by the government. It's owned by a private corporation. I never knew that. I never knew about the books and double standards of books like we didn't know about the MTA when they were supposed to give us better services. But when Washington Square was, we had people picketing against that atrocity that was once was beautiful.
I want to say something about our community which I have been terribly disappointed with. Not all of us here. There's an old village and there's a new village, okay? And the new village went out and protested when they were gonna take down some historical buildings, okay? Here we think we're closing the streets. They didn't come out to close the streets when healthcare and welfare was at stake. This is, we had red flags. Scott Rudin gave us red flags.
Listening to or remembering Mayor Mike going on endlessly about that Vaccahta Stadium you want here on the West Side. And what happened? Nothing. But so vigorously for that. And all we've gotten now is a deadly silence from him. A deadly silence that is gonna have people dying. Like, I was just in the hospital recovering from surgery at St. The Hospital. Only one, St. Vincent's The Hospital. And my wife came to visit me. And I was up on the 12th floor and I was looking south in the view. I could see some of the river. And my wife said, "Wow, that's a million dollar view." And you know what? Mayor Mike and his real estate moguls, I'm sure they are salivating over that million dollar view. And we can't, I don't know how we can ever get him into this equation. I wish we, we should actually do what they did with the...
Give down the city.
Yeah, we should have him, I don't know, I forget what the word is. Get him revoked. Get like, recall. We should have a recall for Mayor Mike.
I think it might be important that there's also Cuomo's information because he wants to get elected and we vote. Who the hell is on the board of St. Vincent's?
We have their names now, but when we were starting to look into the backgrounds to build a case, we went to their website, you can't find it. Since they didn't file with the Attorney General, we couldn't find it. It took a lot of work. We actually found it in the bureaucracy court files. But they really, they took, they immediately took their names off their website. And other hospitals obviously boast about the quality of their board of directors.
What's there should be public and they should be able to contact us.
We're in the process of setting up a website, I just want to say real quick. And maybe that's one of the things that will boast. Not their home address, that would disturb me, but their names and who they are so that you can know that information.
I can sense a critical mass developing with this. Senator Dwayne is left, but Sumitman Godfrey, given the committee's, these two legislators chair, can they have hearings? Also recalling how Goldman Sachs CEOs, top management were wittily and scortingly before a senate committee. What can be done at the city, as well as the state level, city council level and federal level?
It may well be that there are other levels of government like Congress and the US Senate that have a lot more ability to do the kind of job investigatively that's really needed here.
Until there's focus, and it doesn't have to happen tonight, there won't be any action. Right? So, when we sit on our hands, we lose. The people in this room aren't sitting on their hands, they're taking action. When we express our action, our anger, we can begin to act. But until we articulate our specific wins, demands and needs, our elected officials don't have a way to act on our behalf.
We want a hospital.
We want a hospital. So, what's the action we want to create?
Awareness.
An RFP, a request for proposal, produced a winner, Lenox Hill, to create urgent care and not a hospital. Do we want a new RFP that calls for a hospital and that produces a winner that creates a hospital?
Yes.
I'm an outpatient at St. Vincent's. I was an outpatient this morning, had to walk through police lines to get into my appointment. And I want to tell you that every single elected official stood in front of St. Vincent's, stood in front of St. Vincent's the morning after the board closed it and did not call for a hospital. They called for an urgent care center. There had been some discussion amongst them because every single one of them said the same thing. The only one that was absent was Deborah Wick. And she sent a message saying that she was up in Albany trying to do something about it. Senator Dwayne was very angry, but he also called for, at that time, an urgent care. Things changed. You noticed some of the political rhetoric tonight. I'm shocked that Chris isn't here. I don't care what her agenda was. She should have been here. She's the speaker, she's the closest one to the mayor. And, you know, just take that home.
This is her district.
This is her district. I went to almost every single community meeting on St. Vincent's and that awful plan they had to tear down the hospitals and put up condominiums with no affordable housing. That community group that they formed by the end of all those hours and hours and hours of discussion got up and said, "We achieved nothing" because St. Vincent's did exactly what they wanted to do. Eileen. I got hit by... I got hit on my bicycle between 16th and 17th Street a year ago. And I walked, made a mistake. I walked over to St. Vincent's because if you come in an ambulance, they see you like liquor. I walked over, you know, and I had a broken arm. And after fifteen hours in that emergency room, I got up and said, "I need some ice." And three security people were gonna throw me out. And I had the wherewithal to say, "I want to see the head nurse." Now, I don't know if you're the head nurse, Eileen, and I don't know if that's who I saw, but you sure look like this person who came out and saw this angry person in pain. And she said to me, "Mr. Forey, what can I do for you?" That's what the nurses say. And she got me the ice. My friend Susan Sarandon had a hearing that I was at and people keep misquoting her. She talked about the conditions in the emergency room, which were so overutilized that you had to wait many, many, many hours to be seen. And it wasn't the nurses' fault, you know? No one has mentioned the insurance companies. Do you want to know about where this debt comes from? Do you want to know where all the, a lot of, it's the insurance companies and the real estate people that speculate around St. Vincent's? I want to put one other thing in the century yet. All those businesses, those mom and pop stores and they're mostly mom and pop stores around St. Vincent's with those, I was about to use an Anglo-Saxon word, with those high rents, you know? Those are all gonna be out of business now because those thousands of employees are not there. Where is the mayor? Where is Christine Quinn? And don't let these politicians get away with their nice talk. They're not standing in front of St. Vincent's today. They're not saying, "This will not happen." They have to, we have to put some fire under their feet and we can.
I have a very personal involvement with St. Vincent's as well. My daughter was attending lab school on West 17th Street, walking down Broadway and 12th Street when a huge wooden, the wooden thing that they put, they store. Pallet fell from a truck and fell on her shoulder and paralyzed her. And she was rushed to St. Vincent's, which is the only pediatric intensive care unit in all of the West Side. Now, her pediatrician, Bonnie Franklin, is affiliated with St. Vincent's. Our hospital, the downtown hospital, does not have a pediatric care center. And she was rushed to St. Vincent's. We did not know for three nights while she stayed at the pediatric ICU whether that paralysis was permanent or not. It was a very scary time for us. But she got to St. Vincent's in minutes, minutes. And that is gone forever for the students at lab school, for the community in the village, for all of us here in this room and for everybody living downtown in the million dollar condominiums that cropped up in Tribeca. And I will tell everybody buying all those condominiums along the water that you now have lost all of that as well. I'm telling you also in terms of where is the mayor? I've been sitting here handing out every one of these brochures that I had and people are telling me, "How do I reach out?" I will tell you tonight, when you go home, and I'm gonna do it tonight, suggest all of you, tell your friends, go home, call 311, say there is an emergency, we no longer have a hospital in the building. She came here from Puerto Rico in 1956, pregnant, had no money. They took her in at St. Vincent's. Child was given birth to, healthy. She got to go to a clinic for 25 cents.
I'm not a village resident. I'm a New Yorker. I've lived overseas for six years. I came home to fight for my hospital. I came home in August of 2009 at 32 weeks pregnant to have my son at St. Vincent's. He was born on September 11th. And I am so proud that he was born at that hospital on that day. We cannot let St. Vincent's go. There's too many mothers who need that hospital.
For the first sixteen years of my life, I've been a resident of the West Village. And right now, I live on East 21st Street. I'm well relieved about that because at least if I have an emergency in my neighborhood, I have a hospital to go to. And that's, and that's, right, I have a lot of hospitals to go to. I'm 19 now, but for the first sixteen years of my life, I lived in 245 Waverly Place, which is, you know, maybe two blocks away from St. Vincent's. And I would like to request each, think of each and every one of you, write to your elected officials and say, "Hey, why don't you stop funding on some of these unnecessary projects like renovating Penn Station, like the Second Avenue subway."
My daughter's 42 years old now, but when she was five, I brought her to St. Vincent's and they saved her life. She was choked. And the other thing, and I hope it's okay to tell something that I wasn't witness to, but an elderly friend of mine was in Washington Square Park three weeks ago with his health aide. And a woman was turning blue and becoming motionless and the park ranger called 911. It was 3 o'clock in the afternoon. At 4:20, the ambulance came from Beaverton Downtown and she was dead.
My son had a emotional issue. He's great now. We lived in Huckland. We schlepped to St. Vincent's every week because there was a group of teenagers that had care and therapists who were there for him when he needed it. And years ago, and like we said, most of us are all going to have to remember this, my sister got beaten in an anti-war rally. Upper East Side. Guess who would take those people? It's fear they would pay St. Vincent's. In terms of seniors, the other day, I had to call an ambulance for a 90-year-old woman. Took half an hour for the ambulance to get here from Roosevelt Hospital. Thank God, by the time they got here, she was fine. People are gonna die from this community and who's gonna care? Maybe they'll start to care if somebody's rich kid is out clubbing and gets shot or killed or is high or something. I don't know.
This is a tourist.
Yeah, or a tourist. So, for seniors, people 85 and older are the fastest growing demographic in New York City. There has been underutilization, there has been mismanagement, let's admit it. But this community needs a hospital and more and more buildings are being built here. Whatever else you think of these people, they'll have medical needs too. And the entire community, rich and poor, working class, all of us need a hospital. We are collecting people's stories here at the Hudson Guild Phil Fulton Center.
We don't need a 700 million dollar expansion like they were talking about at the Tools Building. You know those 18, 14 million dollars in HEAL monies? We could take those monies and use adaptive reuse to upgrade the facilities as they are now.
We're gonna go home, we're gonna talk to our neighbors. We're gonna talk about the difference between urgent care and emergency care. We're gonna talk about adaptive reuse for the St. Vincent's Hospital as it is now. And we're going to make sure we sign up on that mailing list and we will take all of the things that you've talked about tonight. We're going to plant another forum. We're thinking and hoping that it's going to be in the West Villas just to let everyone know that it is many neighborhoods and many communities that are affected by this and I hope that all of you will join us.
Write a letter to Governor Patterson and to Mayor Bloomberg and to Commissioner Daines to make sure that they understand that we are coming together as a community and we will not stop until we have a hospital for the lower west side of Manhattan.
The nurses who went to college recently received checks from St. Vincent's for reimbursement, which is part of our contract. Those checks bounced. Number two, we're all unemployed now and we're all trying to get unemployment insurance. We went online and registered and found out that we haven't worked at St. Vincent's in the year 2009. Because St. Vincent's probably for the last three years has not registered with the State Department of Labor, which they're supposed to do quarterly. So, I think the only people in here are the politicians that have any kind of leverage to stop the insanity and have a federal investigation of what is going on. to stop the insanity and have a federal investigation of what's going on.
We need to know what's been going on on 12th and 7th, because they're crooks. And I have to tell you, I play golf, I was never invited to the, I never got invited. Everybody here, including myself, remembers the 60s. That's what you need. That's what you need. You need to be out in the streets, you need to stop the traffic, you need to let the politicians know that it's just not good enough. And do not allow them to tell you urgent care is good enough. Do not allow the media, do not allow the politicians to give you anything short of And if you hear from Yetta and Tom that they want you out in the streets, I want you to take five people with you, and I want you out there in the streets. It has been an honor and a privilege to take care of this community. And when I leave, I leave with a broken heart, okay? I want you to fix that heart for me. I want to read in the newspaper that there's a hospital in Lower Manhattan.